All right, we are recording on the air, so I will call our meeting to order of our regular city council meeting and being held at the Richfield Municipal Center in person of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. The first item on our agenda is for everyone who's able to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted and livable with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the open forum. And just to remind people, the open forum is an opportunity for the public to come to the Richfield City Council and share anything they would like to share with us. It's not a discussion opportunity back and forth with the council, but folks can share their thoughts and opinions with us, and they have up to three minutes to do so. So people can participate in the open forum by coming here in person and speaking at the podium. Or you can also call in by dialing one four one five six five five zero 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 one, and then using the webinar access code of two four five four one eight five seven one six five. And then the password is one, two, three, four. And then we do also receive through our staff emails from folks that ask their email to be read at the open forum. So those are all the different ways that you can participate. So I will ask our city clerk, Carrie Sinning, if there are any calls on the line or emails that were sent in to be read.
Mayor, I don't have any prior emails or any voicemails that were done, and it does not look like there are current attendees in our webex.
Okay, so we will wait a little bit to see if anyone does call in. Is anybody here in person interested in speaking at the open forum? All right, so we'll just give it a moment to see if anybody calls in before I close the open forum. And this information is online in our website, and it's also posted on the agenda for each council meeting. Okay, anybody calling in the line? Nope. All right, seeing as we have nobody here and nobody calling in and no emails to read, I will close the open forum and move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, the joint city council and charter commission work session of August tenth, twenty twenty-two, the regular city council meeting of August tenth, twenty twenty-two, the special city council meeting of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and the special city council work session of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
There has been a motion to approve the minutes and a second. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The minutes have been approved. The next item on our agenda is our presentation session, we section, we do have three presentations. I, we have, first, I'll start with the proclamation celebrating Hispanic American Month. The second item presentation will be the proclamation of the city of Richfield for Nell Swanson, amazing community leader in our, here in Richfield. And proclamation celebrating, and then lastly proclamation celebrating the Bartholomew House's one hundred and seventieth birthday. So I will ask Mara Glubka to please join me for the first presentation at the dais as the representative for the Human Rights Commission. Just want to make sure I have these in order. Here we go. All right. So I will read the proclamation, the first one. So whereas Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs from September fifteenth through October fifteenth, pays tribute to Hispanic and Latino Americans, the largest ethnic minority group in the United States of America, for their contributions to the United States of America and to celebrate the culture and history of these groups. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month begins each year on September fifteenth, the anniversary of the independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Mexico celebrates its independence on September sixteenth, and Chile celebrates its independence on September eighteenth. Whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans sought, have sought for and struggled to make the United States of America their home while enduring discrimination and oppression from those who attempted to quash their dreams for better lives for them and their families. And whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans have brought with them their determination, work, talents, and have enriched the lives of the peoples of the United States of America. And I will just personally add, we're here before the United States of America was created. And whereas over nineteen percent of the population of Richfield is Hispanic or of Latino origin, according to the twenty-twenty-one estimates of the U.S. Census Bureau. And whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans have made significant contributions to local communities and our country as a whole. And whereas the Richfield Human Rights Commission supported this proclamation at its August fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting and recommended the Richfield City Council do the same. Now, therefore, I, Maria Rigen Gonzalez, mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Richfield, and call upon the people of Richfield to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, ceremonies, and continue to honor the contributions of our Hispanic and Latino Americans throughout the year. Proclaim this thirteenth day of September, twenty twenty-two. Thank you, Mara, for receiving this on behalf of the Human Rights Commission. You don't have to say anything, but is there anything that you would like to say?
Let's thank you.
All right, thank you, Mara. Thank you so much. Any comments from, from our council? Nope, okay.
I'll just.
Yep, sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to recognize the Puerto Rican attorney that drafted this, which is not me, but is our Human Rights Commission Chair and Walter Burke, who has done a lot in, in his role as the commissioner, as the, as the chair. And this is a part of that, and so I just want to give him a quick shout out.
Thank you so much. And Councilmember Supple.
And I also wanted to say, I think this is something that we should celebrate twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year and not during just one month. So then I think that's something. And the other thing is that I think we need to also celebrate the diversity within the Latino community. It's not a monolithic group of one culture. There are many, many diverse cultures, and I'd like to celebrate all of them all of the time. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilmember Supple. And I'll just add a little fact that we have here in, in Richfield and the political representation that the community in the city of Richfield has had by Latino representatives has been unlike any other community in, in the state of Minnesota. And so we had Edwina Garcia as our city council member and mentor to many of us in the community. We have Simon Troutman, Puerto Rican city council member. We have Paula Cole, who's a Dominican school board member. And then we have myself, Mexican-American, Chicana mayor. And I'm trying to think. Then we have Patricia Torres Ray, who also represents our community here in Richfield. And so just in, in our small community of Richfield, we have an unprecedented amount of, of Latino political representation we have had over the years. So I just, that's, it's a little known fact about our community as it relates to our Latino representation. But all right, thank you very much. I will go on to the next item. And this is, I think John Wicket is here for both of our next items, if I'm understanding. So if you want to join me, John. And we will move on to, let's do, I think I had Nell's proclamation here next. So, and I do know that Nell Swanson's husband Herman is here. Thank you so much for joining us, Herman. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas Nell Swanson cared deeply about the people, the culture, and the students of Richfield. And whereas Nell has been a longtime member of the Richfield community and lived in Richfield until her passing. And whereas Nell was a longtime teacher at the Richfield Public Schools. And whereas Nell was caring, supportive, and empowering of her students. And whereas, whereas a teacher of over forty years, she helped thousands of children grow and develop into strong and caring adults. And whereas she donated her time to the Richfield Historical Society. And whereas Nell has been a tireless advocate for the historical amenities of Richfield. And whereas Nell cared deeply for her family and her friends. And whereas the Richfield community celebrates Nell and all, and has brought pride to our city, great pride in city, um, great pride to our city and community. Now, therefore, I, Maria Rigen Gonzalez, mayor of the city of Richfield, do proclaim that the city of Richfield, Minnesota, and its citizens, that Nell Swanson is hereby extended our support as she has brought pride to our city and our community. Proclaim this thirteenth day of September, twenty twenty-two. Thank you for receiving this, John. And I'm wondering if there's anything you would like to say.
I would, it's my honor to accept this on Herman's behalf. As we all know, Nell was a longtime supporter of the Historical Society. I not only had the honor to know her over the years through the society as president, but I was also one of her students. And I will just say that when I was elected president, she was there, and she gave me a blessing and said, I'm glad you're, you're doing this. And then Herman asked me that, was she your favorite teacher? And I said, I looked right at Nell and I said, Nell, you always told us to tell the truth. And God know, I hated your class. And she just smiled, and she, I mean, she was a long time, so we miss her. We miss her. And it's my honor to accept this for behalf.
I'm sure folks on the council have some things they'd like to share. Anybody would like to share? Councilmember Whaley.
Thank you, Mayor. I was lucky enough to, to know Nell and Herman personally from being church members together, living about a block apart. And from the moment I, I met Nell was very clear that she was extremely passionate and dedicated to, to kids, both in her teaching history. She continued long after retirement to support both kids at the schools, kids at our church. My wife is a school counselor, and when Nell found out, she visited my wife's school and shadowed her and gave her pointers, mentored her. And just that is the, the kind of person that Nell is. And passed along some of her, her supplies from her school days. And to the end, Nell, I, I also know she was a huge supporter of the Historical Society, the Nature Center. Just very passionate about Richfield. And she was not always one to want to be publicly recognized, but she deserves all of this and, and more. And I hope that we all, to honor her legacy, just continue to have our own deep sense of pride in Richfield and support the groups and institutions that make our community what it is.
Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. I had the good fortune, my first year of teaching in Richfield, to be across the hall from Nell. And she was an amazing mentor. And one thing that's not mentioned in the proclamation is she's one of the first Black educators in this Richfield Public Schools. So she was a trailblazer, and she was a mentor to so many people, to, to an entire generation of teachers. She would always take people under their wings and help you, you know, figure it out. And she was somebody you could go to and just say, I don't know what to do. Can you help me? And she always would come through with a suggestion. And she was always honest, and, you know, she told it like it is, which is the best kind of feedback you can possibly get. And so I, I will be eternally grateful that I ended up across the hall from her. But I, I, the people that know Nell would probably get this, but I'm going to say she ran a tight ship because she always had a nautical theme to her classroom as far as even like having a, like a pier set up and portholes and the whole thing. So, so I think this is a well-deserved honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Any other comments? And I will just add, Edwina Garcia is a, was a mentor of mine in this space and running for local elected office. And I think probably the first community member, or if not the first, one of the first community members I met with were Herman and Nell. And she said, if you are interested in, in running for office in this community, these are the people you need to talk to, the first people you need to talk to. And I just remember meeting her and, you know, getting her insight and her wisdom and connecting with her, with both of you. And just greatly appreciative for the work that, that Nell did in our community. And very fortunate to have, we have very strong leader women in the city, in the community of Richfield. And she's one of the first people that I think of. And I know that she was formative for myself, formative for so many other people in this community, her students and, and, and our families as well. So it's just an honor to, to have had her live and serve our community. So many of our families are better because of her, and I'm very thankful for that. Thank you so much for accepting this. And then we have one last proclamation celebrating, oh, sorry. Of course, please. Absolutely. Welcome. Hi, and we haven't had the. Thank you so much for joining. So the last proclamation is celebrating our own Historical Society. So whereas Min Sota Maquis is the homeland of the Dakota people, the Dakota have lived here for many thousands of years. And whereas the eighteen hundreds native nations, including those that occupied land that would become Richfield, negotiated to preserving sovereign land rights and privileges. And whereas we condemn the tools of settler colonism, including genocide and forced assimilation, that created structures of injustice and inequity that continue to oppress and marginalize indigenous and underrepresented peoples used when these negotiations failed. And whereas in eighteen fifty-one, the Dakota signed the Treaty of Traverse de Sioux, ceding land to the southern, to the southern and western Minnesota to the United States government, ushering in a crush of settlers. And whereas leaving the only home he ever knew in Ohio, Riley Bartholomew came to Minnesota in what is now Richfield in the winter of eighteen fifty-two on land that until that year was part of Fort Snelling. And whereas Mr. Bartholomew immediately started constructing what would become the Bartholomew House by the spring of eighteen fifty-three, the middle room of the house was finished. And whereas the rest of the six-person Riley family moved to their new house in the spring of eighteen fifty-three, taking advantage of the fertile land and river, the house would remain a farm for nearly a hundred years. And whereas until nineteen sixty-two, the house had been lived in. And after over a hundred years of existence, the Bartholomew House needed work to ensure it would be available for future generations. And whereas the community recognized the historical significance of the building and restoration work on the house, which began in nineteen sixty-seven. And whereas throughout the tireless work of the Richfield Historical Society volunteers, a hundred and seventy years later, the Bartholomew House is open and an inviting place for all to visit, rich in history, culture, and memories, which we hope will stand for generations to come. And whereas we commit to the work of truth-telling and relationship-building as we seek new pathways forward as relatives in Richfield, the indigenous communities, and those who traversed multiple communities. Now, therefore, I, Maria Rigen Gonzalez, mayor of the city of Richfield, do proclaim that the city of Richfield, Minnesota, and its celeb, and its citizens celebrate the Bartholomew's House one hundred and seventieth birthday and all the work that Richfield Historical Society volunteers do in the community. Proclaimed this thirteenth day of September, twenty twenty-two. Great, I will pass the mic over to both of you.
I just want to say that I think when Riley Bartholomew came here in eighteen fifty-two, he would have had no idea that we would still be talking about him. That there would be a, a room named after him in this very building. He was a justice of the peace. He was a territorial legislator. He served at State Constitutional Convention, and he helped form the first school and the first church. So as a testimony, as a man who cared about his community, we remember him for that. And I definitely would have to believe that he would never imagine that his house, that little house he planted a hundred and seventy years ago on a twenty-acre plot of land would still be around and still be walked through and visited by so many. And this Saturday, we celebrate that hundred and seventy years with a gathering at our History Center at sixty-nine oh one Lindale. We invite the whole community to attend and to take a look at this wonderful building that we are still actively working to repair and restore. And it needs the community, community's help for that. So please come visit us. Please visit this wonderful part of our history and meet our wonderful volunteers like Amber here, who's our new executive director, and all the people who work so hard, and we thank you for your support. Thank you so.
I feel like Don summed it all.
Thank you so.
Thank you. Any comments from council that you'd like to share? Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you for, for that proclamation and just how thoughtfully it was written and delivered. And I also just want to recognize and, and thank you for, for the land acknowledgement and also the celebration of our history and the, the good work of Mr. Bartholomew, that all those things are important, and we can't reflect unless we look at all the history. And thank you for bringing all those parts of history to, to this proclamation and through your work with the, the Historical Society to our, to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Other comment? All right, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any comments on that? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is a consent calendar, which is to be read by city manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action items on these items is necessary. Tonight's consent calendar is long, so bear with me. Item A, consider approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Emergency Preparedness Agreement with the city of Bloomington, using public health emergency preparedness grant funds distributed by a federal grant from the Centers for Disease Control to provide services in the area of public health emergency preparedness, bioterrorism, and the development of a response system. Item B, consider the approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending sections six seventeen, six eighteen, and six nineteen of the Richfield City Code to update regulations to be consistent with delegated state requirements and miscellaneous edits for clarity related to food establishments, lodging establishments, and public pools. Item C, consider the approval of the continuation of an agreement with the city of Bloomington for the provision of food, pools, lodging, therapeutic massage, and body art establishment inspection services for the city of Richfield for twenty twenty-three. Item D, consider the approval of the Fourth Amendment to the site lease agreement at sixty-seven hundred Portland Avenue between the city of Richfield and Sprint Spectrum Realty Company, LLC, successor in interest to Sprint Spectrum LP, a Delaware limited partnership. Modify equipment and request for an addition of an automatic five-year automatic renewal term. Item E, second reading of an ordinance amending section three hundred and section twelve twenty of the city code of ordinance relating to the abolishment of the Liquor Department and Liquor Operations Director position within the city organization. Item F, first reading of, of an ordinance amendment modifying regulations for electric vehicle charging. Item G, consider the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two to consider the issuance of new on-sale wine and three-point-two-percent malt liquor licenses for hockey located at sixty-four oh one Nicollet Ave. Item H, consider a resolution approving a grant compliance agreement and related agreements, I'm sorry, a related document, between the city and Minnesota Independent College and Community for Use of a Livable Communities Demonstration Act. Item I, item I, consider the adoption of a resul- Item I, item I, consider the adoption of a resolution establishing an absentee ballot board and appointing election judges for the general election of November eighth, twenty twenty. Item J, consider approval of the purchase of a Mac and a Maxwell cab, chassis, from Nuss Truck and Equipment for a hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred and seven dollars and dump box no fighting equipment from Towmaster Truck Equipment for a hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred and twelve, totaling two hundred seventy-seven thousand and twenty-two hundred and nineteen dollars, plus taxes and licensing in twenty twenty-three for use by the Public Works Department and authorize the City Manager to approve contract changes not to exceed ten thousand without further City Council consideration. Item K, consider pre-authorizing the acceptance of eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-two in safety grant program funds from the Minnesota Occupational Safety and Health Administration, Minoshia, to assist in the purchase of stackable aluminum trench boxes for enhanced job site safety. And finally, item L, consider the approval of a request for the temporary expansion of the licensed premises for Thompson's Fireside Pizza doing business as Fireside Foundry located at sixty-seven thirty-six Penn Avenue South to allow for the outside service of strong beer in their parking lot on Sunday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, in conjunction with Richfield's Open Streets at Penn. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
I would move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Any comments or questions on the consent calendar? Councilmember Troutman.
I just have a quick, uh, thank you to staff and particularly Support Services Manager Anderson and, uh, our Police Chief Jay Henthorn for the liquor license we extended to Fireside Foundry. And I think one of the benefits of being part of our urban small town is that you're able to, to, to just be flexible uh, and work with our community so we can, um, they can participate in Pen Fest like they wanted to. So thank, thank you, folks, for, for making that happen.
Absolutely. I second that. Councilmember, um, Supple.
There are a number of really important things on this, um, consent agenda, but I want to draw attention to item K because of the safety that is involved there. There have been some tragic situations in our state and nation where workers are fixing the utilities and it caves in on them, and this is to prevent that. And so I think it's really important that we take advantage of this safety and safeguard our workers as they're repairing things. Because you don't have to be that far down in a trench to lose your life if it caves in. So I thank you to whoever applied for that grant and brought it forward.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Wayland.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to, uh, we said this at the first reading too, but a quick clarification for anyone just hearing and doing a double take about the abolishment of the liquor department. Um, just a clarification that it is a restructuring, it will be, the liquor stores will still exist. It will be a manager instead of director. Uh, for you as a resident of the city, functionally, you will still be able to go to all our liquor stores, make your purchases there, have the profits, support our parks. Um, so that is not as alarming as it sounds. And then also want to make a brief comment. I'm still very sad that Vena closed, but I'm excited for Cataki, um, to be moving into that space. So we'll be looking forward to try it out once they're open.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. The next item, um, is one public hearing, which goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public reading for this, or a public hearing for the second reading of a proposed ordinance amending the existing cable television franchise agreement from August first, twenty twenty-two to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three with Comcast of Arkansas, Florida, Louisiana, Minnesota, Mississippi, and Tennessee, Inc. And the Southwest Suburban, uh, Cable Commission or Commission consists of the cities of Eden Prairie and Edina, Hopkins, Minnetonka, and Richfield, Minnesota, the member cities, and the Commission administers and enforces cable franchises on behalf of member sites. And on our bout, January first, nineteen ninety-seven, each of the member cities, uh, granted a cable television franchise to KBL Cable Systems of Southwest, Inc., the existing franchise. And at that same time, the member cities each adopted a television, a cable television regulatory ordinance or regulatory ordinance to be incorporated into the city code of each member city. In two thousand, the Commission and member cities approved a transfer of the existing franchise to Time Warner, Inc. In June of two thousand and five, Time Warner transferred the existing franchise to Comcast Communications, or Comcast. Comcast currently operates cable systems in each of the member cities under authority granted under the existing franchise. The initial term of the franchise ran for fifteen years and was extended by the member cities to expire in January, or excuse me, July thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, and each member city adopted a cable franchise in two thousand and twelve, which granted Comcast a ten-year franchise with an effective date of August first, two thousand and twelve. Due to delays in finalizing the needs assessment report and related matters, negotiations of the renewed franchise will obviously not be completed before the existing franchise expires on August first, twenty twenty-two. The expiration, the existing cable franchise during the renewal proceedings is not unusual for the Cable Commission franchise renewals, nor is it unusual in the cable industry. Even if a member city, even if member cities took no action to extend the existing franchise, the Comcast franchise would remain in place. Comcast would continue to have, um, authority to operate. Uh, the Commission and Comcast pursuant to forty-seven USC Section five forty-six, sub-H, are currently conducting informal franchise renewal negotiations and attempt to reach a mutually, uh, acceptable terms for franchise renewal. And so, uh, this is a, a public hearing required under the City Charter, Section ten point oh-five. Uh, the first reading of the proposed ordinance occurred on July twenty-sixth. In twenty twenty-two, City Council meeting and a notice of the public hearing was posted in The Sun Current on September first, twenty twenty-two. So, um, before we have, uh, the, the motions, the public hearing, are there any comments?
This is a routine extension while we continue to negotiate franchise agreements. I don't have anything more to add.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, the, we're, so this is a, a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? City, City Clerk Sinning, anybody calling in by any chance? No. I'll ask one more time for this public hearing. Any comments? Seeing none, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Um, any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The public hearing has been closed.
Uh, having conducted the public hearing, I would move that we approve the attached ordinance amending the term existing, uh, of the existing franchise agreement from August first, twenty twenty-two to, uh, January, uh, thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on the item? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The motion has been approved. Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. The next item goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. Uh, this is a second reading of a proposed ordinance amendment updating the City's zoning code subsection that regulates fences, walls, and hedges. Staff is proposing updates to the fence regulations, section five oh-nine dot fifteen in the City's zoning code to incorporate the following items. One, uh, general provisions that define good neighbor standards that require the finished side of the fence to face the adjacent property. Two, modifying height requirements for corner lots. Three, um, process for administratively approving special exceptions for through lots that possess unique and special circumstances that make it impractical to meet the zoning requirements. At the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting of, of the Planning Commission, uh, no one from the public spoke to the matter. To avoid confusion, the Planning Commission recommended the removal of subdivision twelve regarding non-conformities, as it is already addressed by Code Section nine oh-five dot twenty-five, non-conformities. With that one change, the Planning Commission voted five one to recommend approval of the ordinance. Um, since then, staff has made minor modifications to simplify the language of the ordinance and to provide additional flexibility uh, in regards to setbacks. Um, does staff have anything to add at this time?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, I'll just address that, um, at the last open forum, there were comments read from, um, Mr. and Mrs. Karen and Jonathan Lantheer. I'm sorry if I messed up your name. Um, and I, I did want to respond to those and just say that there was some confusion on, um, what the intent and what the ordinance was actually saying. Um, some people believed that it had to do with the actual location of your home and, um, how that related to your property line and where your fence would be setback. It does not. It is, um, in regard to the actual required setback in the zoning code. To address that, we simplified things and we just said six feet. Um, you don't need to look up your setback then. There's no math involved. It was just six feet. In addition, um, that person or that family, um, stated that they were concerned about the, um, reduction in their backyard space, and we did take another look, uh, look at that. Um, the ordinance as it's proposed tonight allows for a reduction of that six-foot setback for six-foot fences in the rear yard to three feet with some additional landscaping. So we, we took that feedback, um, and I wanted to call those, um, changes to your attention.
So I did also, um, ask the City Manager to send out in advance, I do continue to have concerns about the setback issue in, in part from the conversation with that same resident. And just, just as a, I think it's relevant, um, I'm, I'm glad staff took a stab at addressing the concerns that they raised. Um, the resident meant it very seriously. They actually built a fence to get in under the wire before any changes were made. Um, so they put thousands of dollars towards wanting their fence in that location. So I think people do care about this. Um, I think this is important. So I, I think this addresses a lot of issues and, and just to be clear, if, if it wasn't so, I don't want to completely speak for staff, but one of the big things, things that changes for corner lots is that the side of your house can no longer have a full height six-foot fence. It goes down to four feet. And then there's also this additional setback of six feet. I'm just, I'm concerned about the solution that they come up with and that it is complicated and difficult to understand for residents. And I think it's a little bit unfair in some ways that corner properties, we're, we're asking a lot out of corner properties, but not really addressing issues for interior lot properties. I think the simplicity of the ordinance is really important in this case because people have to interpret and do this themselves. Um, I know staff have documents that are more readable to the public that they'll provide, but this isn't a situation where they submit an application and staff review their complex things and they say, okay, you need to change this. They go and read this and then they go build their fence. And then we have to decide, um, do we, do we care enough to enforce and try to make them relocate that fence? So I, you know, provided in this attachment, which was sent out as well, um, a comparison table. So we've got, you know, these different areas. If it's in the front yard and you have a sidewalk present, you need a three-foot setback from the right-of-way. If there's no, no sidewalk present, there's a zero-foot setback. Side yard, similar rules for a four-foot fence. And then in the backyard, if you have these appropriate, um, plantings, including vines, unless you get specific permission from the Community Development Director, you need a six, with a three-foot setback, excuse me, uh, without those plantings, you need a six-foot setback. And then I also did a visual just to kind of compare how this looks, and it's a little bit harder to see in black and white. But you could end up, and this is an example on Seventieth Street, where you have a single block face on the north side that has three different setbacks for fences in a row, where we've got the four-foot fence with no sidewalk on the side is zero feet. Then they have compliant planting, so it's three feet. The neighbor decided not to do the planting, so it's six feet. And then it's back to zero feet for the four-foot fence. So I think this is confusing to residents. I think it's, um, impractical to administer, and I think it doesn't do something else that is also important, which is to help preserve future use of the right-of-way. So what I'm suggesting instead is we just do a flat three-foot setback. We allow residents to choose appropriate landscaping for their needs, but not impose a specific requirement. So the benefits of that, we're getting it away from the right-of-way. We're allowing space for this planting without mandating a specific level of planting. We're not having a jog where four-foot fences are moving around to meet the six-foot fence setback. Um, it's encouraging awareness of those right-of-way locations, which has been an issue of people putting it not only setback zero feet, but into the right-of-way. And then it's creating, avoiding to creating non-conformities if a sidewalk is installed later. Um, I know, uh, Community Development Director Palman responded to a couple of those concerns, and I'm, I'm open to feedback, particularly on, if we want to relax what I'm suggesting with the three feet everywhere, but I, I continue to disagree even after hearing those responses. And I actually, one question I had, although it was, you, the city engineer mentioned that it was possible to relocate fences as part of a sidewalk project, do we have the ability to force a fence to be moved on private property if it was there prior? I thought a non-conforming use can just stay.
Can you clarify your question?
So, in your email response, you mentioned that, uh, fence built at zero feet, a front yard fence, for example, if a sidewalk were installed later, a sidewalk budget would likely include moving fences. Can we, can they just say, no, I don't want my fence moved if that happens? Or do, do we have the right to say your fence needs to be moved three feet into your property?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, if it is on their private property, the city does need to negotiate with that property owner because if a sidewalk is going in, that fence would have to be removed for the installation, the actual construction of a sidewalk. Um, and then we would work with them to, yes, move it back to meet the setback so that, because as of right now, we, um, provide a service. We, we plow those sidewalks. They're primarily arterial and collector streets, um, and our equipment needs that distance to get through. I don't know how those negotiations work. Um, and if, if we would modify that and say two feet will work, we can get our plows through on that. I, I am not part of those discussions.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. I didn't really notice that until I re-read your email after Katie sent it out. So I, I still worry about that. I, I worry about having a different standard for, although there's a great reason why we have that, that standard, to have that setback from sidewalks. I think it's unfair to give people additional use of their space because they don't have a sidewalk. And I think it sets up conflict when we do add those sidewalks, that suddenly they now lose future yard space. So for all of that reasons, for simplicity, for fairness, and for just aesthetics of having a straight line of fence, I would prefer we go with a flat three-foot setback. So, um, I'm curious what other council members think, or if staff want to add additional comments in, in response.
Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would actually, um, at the risk of going a slightly different direction, at least to start with, my, my main question as I was considering this is like, just to back up and like, what, what is the problem we are trying to solve? Why was revisiting this on the, the work plan? Um, and in talking with Director Palman, she had a lot of helpful context. And so I wanted to give you a chance to share that as kind of the grounding for why are we even talking about this?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Um, so in the course of our work, often we get comments that come up from neighborhoods. When new projects go in, we get comments all the time. We take looks at our ordinances and we leave little notes in there for when we have time to address things. Um, the fence issues really tended to come up for us when we put in sidewalks. Um, so the, the trail along Seventy-Sixth Street was a big impetus for people to start calling the city and saying, you know what, this, these tabs are really great. Uh, these six-foot fences on either side, as I walk past them, are not so great. Uh, why do we let this happen? So we made a little note in our zoning code. Um, time goes by, we, we install sidewalks, then bike paths on Sixty-Sixth Street, the same, the same comments start coming in. We look back, yep, we still have that note. We haven't gotten to that yet. Um, then last year, we got some comments about our, uh, through lot fence regulations. Um, we told the person asking, yep, we, uh, can try and get to that. Seems like a pretty simple amendment. Um, you can either apply for it, which forces our hand, and we have a certain amount of time to, to do that, or you can wait till we get to it, and then you don't have to pay an application fee. Uh, they said, we'll try and wait. We're not in a hurry. Uh, fast forward, it's been more than a year now. We still haven't gotten to that. Uh, we had an opportunity when we had a consulting planner on staff uh, to do little projects that were fairly discreet. Those are perfect things to hand off to consulting planners. We said, this fence ordinance is hanging out there. Can you touch it? Or can you take care of it? Take a look? Can you look at both through lots? And because these fences on our arterials and collectors keep coming up, can you look at that too? So that's how we got here. That's why this is before you know.
Thank you. And within that context, I think, um, the experience along these trails that are great amenities that we have in our community, I think, is the, a major thing. And then the other piece to me that's important, and I, I hear in Councilmember Hayford O'Leary's comments as well, is just allowing people as much use of their, both literally their yard and then as much as right-of-way can often feel like your yard, even if it is not literally yours. Um, but just giving people, uh, not un- not literally yours, but just giving people, not unduly restricting how much usable space they have. And so I, circling back to kind of the question, I'm open to the idea of a three-foot setback instead of a six-foot setback. I don't really see a need to explore, as Councilmember Heford O'Leary is proposing, an additional three-foot setback where there's currently no required setback. And then I have a separate question for later, but I guess that's where I'm at, is that it seems like in response to the staff proposal or the proposed amendment, I would lean towards just the, whatever the minimal setback is that allows us to use it. And primarily, I appreciate the aesthetic goals from both staff and Councilmember Heford O'Leary. Frankly, people are going to build whatever kind of fence they want, that even if it's all four feet or regardless of height, they're going to look different. Some people will just decide to have them set back farther. We're not, unless we like really mandate things, we're not going to get a nice clean line that feels uniform and like it was coordinated because it's along a trail, you're going to have thirty different houses in your walk and people are going to do what works for them personally. So I guess my inclination, as much as I don't consider myself a libertarian in this sense, is to not overly regulate something that seems like it is just going to be a bit of a hodgepodge regardless.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Supple, sign your hand up.
So in listening to Councilmember Heford O'Leary, a question was sparked. Is it required to have a building permit to put in a fence? Or do people put them in and then if they're not working, we go back and say, hey, it doesn't work?
Councilmember Supple, that's correct. You're not required to have a building permit, you're not required to get any permit for a fence. Typically what happens is that people come in and they say, where can I build a fence? And we give them a handout and we say, this is where you can build a fence. There are people that hire contractors and they just start building their fences and those tend to get caught by inspectors who are out doing housing inspections and they see a fence going up and stop by and say, hmm, something looked wrong, you should call the city. But there isn't a permit to begin that work.
Okay, that's helpful because I was trying to weigh allowing people to have as much possible space in their backyard as possible with making sure that it's simple enough to understand. And so I am tending to agree with Councilmember Wayland that if we could simplify it so we don't have the six-foot setbacks, that would be helpful and not worry about the landscaping. But I hesitate to like take three more feet away from people that would have a zero. So I think I'm kind of in between the two proposals. Thank you.
Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciated a lot of the additions that staff had, particularly the discretion that staff reserved for itself to just make accommodations when things seem to make sense. I thought that was, I really was appreciative of that. I'm also very sympathetic to Councilmember Wayland's libertarianism. And also similar to Councilmember Heford O'Leary, also had resident concerns that just, I'm just, I don't understand this. I don't, and just even working with them to try and understand what the resolution was and what the rule was. And then the fact that like, Director Pelman, you observed, everybody will just naturally read this for themselves and then maybe they'll call the city, but they're just going to take a stab at this. And it just, the thing that I think just sits poorly for everybody is that in good faith, you do what you try and think is right and then you find out three years later, I'm wrong, I got to rip my fence up. And then that, if, so if there's anything that we can do to simplify this so that, because they're not, there's not like a general contractor that's going to pull a permit for this, making it intuitive, I think is a really worthy goal. And I just want to recognize that it's not that staff hasn't done that already, but it's just, it does feel really confusing.
Councilmember Heford O'Leary.
I had a clarifying question and it's just escaped me, so if you wanted to share where you're at.
Yep. I am resonating with a lot of the discussion being had around keeping it as simple as possible. And then where Councilmember Wayland, with what he proposed, and then Councilmember Supple agreed with, is doing the three-foot setback, but not taking that additional three foot from the folks that don't have a setback.
Okay. So I do remember the question. I was just curious from staff, when you walk by a trail and you see like a hundred percent opaque four-foot fence and a hundred percent opaque six-foot fence, neither one is terribly attractive. Why did you hold six-foot fences to such a higher standard versus saying like fences have to be a certain amount of opacity or a certain material quality?
Sure, that's a good question. I think it's a combination of aesthetics and also safety. So if you look at some of the examples that we've provided in your packet, you see those really long expanses of the six-feet opaque fences. If you think about it in terms of if you were approving a building, we wouldn't allow a building to be that long with no articulation, just a blank wall. And that's what it feels like you're walking by when it's a six-foot fence. You feel like you're walking by a long blank wall where no one can see you. There are no eyes on the street for safety. At least if it's a four-foot fence, you can see back and forth, there's landscaping on the top, there's some variety there. So it's both aesthetic and a safety issue. So that's why we reduced, why we focused on the six-foot fences.
Well, it seems like we have consensus on going to the three-foot, leaving the four-foot fences alone. So I will make the motion with the amendment. And so basically, the amendment would change from what I've written out. I don't know if we should just direct staff to change it this way. I don't know if they want to do it on the spot, but are you clear on what was discussed? Or?
I believe so. Would you like me to state what I think I'm hearing?
Yeah.
What I'm hearing is that we would like to include a three-foot setback for fences along sidewalks and no other side, no other setbacks for other fences, correct?
So it would also have a three-foot for a six-foot fence even without a sidewalk?
Yes.
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 But so no changes to the current rule that if there's a sidewalk present, you need a three-foot setback? If it's a four-foot fence, zero-foot setback?
Correct. That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that we want the three-foot setback along sidewalks and for six-foot fences and no other additional setback. And we are removing the landscaping requirement.
Oh, that's what you were going to say. Okay, Councilmember Wayland.
Yes, that is, that is what I understood. I also, at the risk of further complicating things, did want to bring up, I live right by the Seventy-Sixth Street Trail and I was going down that, I noticed there are, I don't know that it's the majority of homes, but there are numerous homes that their back door is actually on the side of their house facing the trail. And I'm wondering, I think in response to a different question that was raised, you had mentioned that there is still a normal like variance request process that could happen. If someone lived in a house like that where their back door is on the side, they wanted their fence, they wanted a six-foot fence to extend fully to their back door so that their back door opened into the fenced-in area, is that something they could apply for a variance for? And would that be different enough to qualify for a variance? Or would the only option available to that homeowner be to have a four-foot fence up until they got to the backyard?
Councilmember Wayland and Mary can maybe jump in here. The attorney, Bechen. It's really hard to make generalizations about what would qualify for a variance, just on that. In general, what you're saying to me doesn't sound like a particularly unique situation. It sounds like something that's going to happen regularly with people who have a door on the side of their house and live on a, but I don't know. It's just too hard to generalize a variance because something has to be unique and different about that hour. I'm sorry, that's not a great answer.
Oh, sorry.
I guess in follow-up then, that's sort of what I was expecting. I mean, the double-edged sword, it's common enough that I would bring it up, which then means it's too common to qualify for a variance. Is it possible to have any sort of, like I feel like there are other codes where we have like a exceptions upon staff consideration? Or like, is there any, short of a full-on variance, is there any other type of exception that could be considered for that? I guess I, especially like I saw one house where like their, their actual patio is on that side of their house. And I don't know, I'm just, it seems like it would place an undue and probably unexpected to them restriction on what they could do in their, what would feel like part of their backyard.
I want to ask a clarifying question. Did that fence already exist? Is that something they had? And they, because there is, there's nothing here that would make them remove that fence.
Correct.
And so if their patio is there, presumably they're enjoying their patio now without that fence. This ordinance also wouldn't prohibit you from planting a row of trees for privacy? But if you wanted to carve out a specific exception that related to the placement of the door on your house, you would need, I'm thinking that you would need to write that into the ordinance.
Yeah, which defeats all of what we've been saying about simplicity. So, okay, well, I think I'm comfortable not adding in a complicated exception, but just do acknowledge, I think there were some houses I saw like that, that did already have fences. Certainly there's several, I mean, you have pictures of some of them, houses that have these tall privacy fences on the side of their house already, who will be grandfathered in. But yeah, I guess just acknowledge that that could be a frustrating situation for someone who's buying a corner house that does feel, is just different and harder than someone who's got an interior home.
Councilmember Heford O'Leary, sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, Councilmember Wayland, I do hear what you're saying and I think in general, it's worth acknowledging, I think I support where we're at, but we are generally asking a bit more from corner properties. They are unique properties, people do know that when they buy them, that there are certain unique circumstances. And one of them is losing that fence. But just to be clear, they can fence that if they had a dog or whatever, they could have a four-foot fence and let the dog ride into the yard. They just wouldn't have the full height option on the side of their house. But yeah, I appreciate that for some people, that's going to be, that's going to be a pain. Before we move to an actual motion, I just wanted to make others aware of an issue and then reiterate for staff, although I've already said it, since we are sticking with a zero-foot setback for four-foot fences, I want us to really be sure that we have at least a zero-foot setback as the not fences being built in the right-of-way. I mentioned this to staff earlier on, it's a really common issue. So please spread the word if you know people building fences, that they need to know where the property line is, they can't just build it four feet from the curb because there's nothing there. It's unfortunately a very common issue and I know staff mentioned they were going to clarify the language of their handout to be clear about that as well. But just because there's not a sidewalk, that doesn't mean it's yours to go build structures in. So procedurally, can I make the motion just kind of describing the changes or, okay?
And before you do that, Councilmember Troutman.
Oh, thank you. And I just wanted to clarify, just because we used the phrase, you know, variance for the discretion that the ordinance reserves for itself, it's not a formal variance, is it, it's not a formal variance process that it's the discretion, which I understand, just sort of invites maybe, when the staff has to make a decision, it sort of puts a burden on you to, at some point, some people are going to be upset, but just so I understand the process, it's more your discretion than a formal variance process, right? Or is it go through the planning commission, comes to us?
That is correct. We're talking about a formal variance process.
Oh, okay.
There is discretion written into this ordinance specifically about through lots, but it only applies to through lots because the situation is so unique for each of those properties that we're trying to find a way for them to build any sort of privacy fence if they would like them on some part of the lot. Because right now, there is no ability for them to build a six-foot fence anywhere. So that discretion applies specifically to through lots.
Thank you. I think this just stands to support the proposition that we're struggling, I'm struggling to understand all the subtleties of the, of the ordinance. So I like that innovation, it's too bad it doesn't apply everywhere, but I'm glad to know where it's at. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Councilmember.
So I'll make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance amendment to the city's zoning code to incorporate general provisions, modified height requirements for corner lots and a special fence exception for through lots with the changes discussed, which include reducing the setback of six-foot fences to three feet and removing a landscaping requirement for those fences. And to approve the resolution authorizing summary publication of that ordinance.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any other comments or questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is to consider a resolution approving the 2022 revised and 2023 budget for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. On May 26, 2020, the city established an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to support the preservation and creation of affordable housing in the city. Through its trust fund, the city can support the rehabilitation and preservation of existing affordable housing, promote the development of additional affordable housing, and assist individuals with rental and down payment assistance. The city's Housing and Redevelopment Authority administers the trust fund on behalf of the city. The 2022 revised budget provides increases in funding for the following affordable housing programs. $160,000, up from $110,000, for down payment assistance through the HRA's First-Time Home Buyer Program, which serves households earning up to eighty percent of the area median income. $200,000, up from $80,000, for the New Home Program, which serves households earning up to eighty percent of the area median income with affordable homeownership opportunities. The increase in expenditures is possible because the HRA was able to identify and transfer sales proceeds from the Cedar Point II redevelopment project to the trust fund. The 2023 proposed budget for the trust fund includes funding for the following affordable housing programs. $160,000 for the First-Time Home Buyer Program. $60,000 for down payment assistance for buyers of new homes at Woodlawn Terrace. $180,000 for the New Home Program. $200,000 for to Richfield Flats, which is fifty-five affordable rental units, to deepen affordability and support energy efficiency improvements. Funding for the trust fund in the 2022 revised and the 2023 budgets is provided by community development block grant funds and proceeds from the sale of HRA property. Does staff want to add anything?
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. I'll just remind the council that the HRA approved their revised budget in August, so last month. And this is essentially a housekeeping item that is required of you. The HRA did approve these funding revisions last month.
Thank you. I wanted to thank staff for all the work they put into this and there's a number of really valuable programs. For anyone who's listening in the general public, if you go to the city website, you can look up the Affordable, Richfield Affordable Housing Trust Fund Annual Report for 2021 to find out about some of those things. Or if you want to look in the agenda packet, it's on page 212 of that. But there's a lot of really great programs that went on and I want to thank staff for that. At this point, I would move to adopt a resolution approving the 2022 revised budget and the 2023 budget for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Second.
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Any comments or questions on this item? Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say, all of these programs are great. I'm especially excited. I know we have another conversation happening soon about some increased flexibility in some of the TIF funding, but I'm excited to see the specific funding toward Richfield Flats. But I'm excited to see the specific funding toward Richfield Flats. I know that perpetually, the problem with affordable housing developments is just lack of funding. And so as we can continue to innovate and find ways to help fill those funding gaps just directly, rather than always having to look for these highly competitive grants, I just think that's really great and a wonderful investment of money. So I appreciate that and look forward to the ongoing conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Other comments? Councilmember Troutman.
I just wanted to echo just my appreciation for this and then just remind folks who aren't aware that for folks that have already participated in this, if they end up selling their homes within that time, that that money, even though there are no payments, monthly payments, those monies come back to the, to the HRA and Economic Development Fund. So these, these dollars that we're putting in not only transform those families' lives, but have the opportunity to recycle and be transformational to multiple other families multiple times. So, great work.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. And I'll just add, I'm just so proud of this work. And one of the reasons that I ran for office, and, and I think many of us do what we do, is to be able to provide opportunities for exceptional quality of life in our community and the development of this trust fund that didn't exist previously and the, these programs that we have. I've talked to many residents who have been beneficiaries of these programs, just talking to people out in community who have proactively come to me and told me the impact that it's made in their lives. And I'm just very proud of, of this work and, and very thankful to our staff who's been leading it. And to be able to add money to, to these programs, given we have a national crisis in housing, we are being very proactive and growing our work to keep Richfield affordable and accessible to all of our families. So, very proud of that. Any other comments? Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted to draw your, your attention to the $60,000 for the down payment assistance for buyers of new homes in Woodlawn Terrace. And that's something that's very innovative because if you're in a manufactured home community, sometimes you cannot get financing for your mortgage because you don't own the land that's underneath your, your home. And so they, the people at Woodlawn Terrace are able to set up a cooperative so that they are cooperatively owning that. But it was still hard to find the financing. And so this is really important and innovative because it allows people to get down payment assistance so that they can buy their home. Thank you.
All right, the item was, the motion was made and seconded. And I see no other comments, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to consider the approval of a resolution authorizing the lawful gambling premises permit by Firefighters for Healing to conduct lawful gambling at Protagonist Kitchen and Bar, 6601 Lyndale Avenue South, Suite 130. On July 26th of this year, the city received an application for a premises permit to be submitted to the Minnesota State Gambling Control Board by Firefighters for Healing to conduct lawful gambling at Protagonist Kitchen and Bar. Firefighters for Healing is a nonprofit founded in 2010 whose goals are to support burn survivors and their families, as well as firefighters and first responders injured in the line of duty and in need of therapy. They plan to use the proceeds from their lawful gambling activities to support the operational expense of their transitional housing, apartment facilities, and other services. The Public Safety Director has reviewed the background information and documents and approves of its contents and sees no basis for denial. I don't know if staff has anything further to add.
Councilmember Wayland, I would just add, this is just a routine application. This particular, this particular establishment also owns Sandy's. They also have lawful gambling there. So they're just wanting to provide that at Protagonist as well.
Well, then, I will make the motion that we adopt the resolution approving the lawful gambling premises permit application by Firefighters for Healing to conduct lawful gambling at Protagonist Kitchen and Bar, 6601 Lyndale Avenue South, Suite 130.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. Any comments or questions on this? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Just to clarify, does, does this only mean pull tabs or does this mean something else, some of the form of gambling?
You know, I believe in the application, they checked several different boxes. I think pull tabs are the most familiar and, but yes, they have the app to do more than pull tab.
Okay, thanks.
Other comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is consideration, uh, to consider the adoption of a resolution designating the city's contribution towards health, dental, term and disability insurance premiums for 2023 for general service and management. The city contributes to the cost of premiums for four levels of insurance coverages available to city employees. Full-time employee contributions are discussed within the staff report, as well as contributions towards health insurance for part-time regular general services employees. The Local Government Information System Association, our Logis Group, changed insurance carriers in 2017 to Health Partners Insurance as part of the five-year contract. Rate branding was introduced along with rate cap for each of the contract years. After an RFP process through Logis, Health Partners will continue to provide health insurance coverage for the group and the city of Richfield's premium increase was solidified at 9.3%. In 2023, dental rates were kept at the same rate and the city self-insures dental coverage. The city is part of the Logis Group for Life Insurance and the city's current long-term disability provider, Madison National, OCH, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, company, kept the rates the same for 2023. The local 49 bargaining unit members have not yet negotiated the 2023 contract, but have agreed in the past to adopt the same benefit plans offered to the general services and management employees, and thus adopt a similar provision in their respective contracts. Police and fire bargaining units have settled contracts for 2023, and those include the same benefits plans offered to the general service and management employees. Thank you. Does staff have any comments?
Available for questions.
Then I would move we adopt a resolution designating the city's contribution towards health, dental, term life, and long-term disability insurance premiums for 2023 for general service and management employees.
Second.
Are there, uh, the motion was made and seconded. Any comments or questions on this? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This item is to consider the 2022 revised and 2023 proposed budget resolutions adopting the 2023 preliminary property tax levy, setting truth in taxation hearing date, authorizing budget revisions, authorizing revision of 2022 budget of various departments and city fees for 2023. On August 17, 2022, a special city council meeting was held for the purpose of presenting and discussing the 2022 revised, 2023 proposed budget, and the 2023 preliminary property tax levy. At this meeting, staff presented to the city council a preliminary gross tax levy of $26,784,573, which includes a levy for general fund operations of $21,236,477, a debt service levy of $4,100,600, an equipment and technology levy of $868,400, and an economic development agency levy of seven, five, excuse me, an economic development agency levy of $579,096. Accordingly, the 2023 preliminary gross levy represents a 6.60% increase from the 2022 gross levy. As council is aware, once the preliminary levy is approved, it may be further reduced at a later city council meeting, but legally, it cannot be increased over the preliminary approved amount. In addition, the city must certify its proposed property tax levy for payable years 2023 to the county auditor and set a date for its truth and taxation public meeting on or before September 30, 2022. The truth and taxation public meeting must be held between November 25th and December 28th, 2022, and must occur at 6:00 PM or later. The city's truth and taxation public meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 13, 2022, at 6:00 PM. At the August 17 special city council meeting, staff also presented the proposed fees, excuse me, city fees for 2023. Staff is asking council to adopt a resolution setting city fees for 2023. Additionally, the staff also in the financial impact shared that the city's tax capacity rate is anticipated to decrease from 53.680% to 50.563%. Did staff want to add anything?
Yes, thank you. Finance Manager Burma has a brief presentation, and Ashley's making her way up here. I just, or going to the podium. I just wanted to thank her. She, you know, was, she started as we were already underway with the budget. She had to hit the ground running. Very, very grateful to her. It was a lot of work. I also want to thank all the staff and council. I mean, budgets are, they're big. This was a tough one for a bunch of reasons, and it definitely is a team effort. So I really appreciate everyone's dedication, and I'm, and I'm proud of the document.
Thank you, Katie. Good evening, Mayor and council members. And I would like to begin by extending my sincere thanks to the city manager, all department directors, finance team, and numerous other city staff that put so much time and effort to craft and develop a balanced budget. A staff report is included in the council packet, and Councilmember Supple already recited that. It talks about the 2023 preliminary property tax levy, setting truth and taxation hearing date, revising 2022 budget, and the city fee for 2023. A special city council work session was held on August 17 to discuss the budget and preliminary tax levy for 2023. The video of the work session is posted on the city's website. Since the last work session, there, the staff has an update available on the 2023 fiscal disparities budgeted aid that I want to share with the council. For 2023, the city budgeted $4.1 million in fiscal disparity distribution levy, assuming 1% increase over 2022. However, based on the preliminary metro data, the League of Minnesota Cities is projecting that the metro fiscal disparities tax base sharing pool will decline for 2023 taxes, and Richfield's share is estimated to be at $3.7 million. Lower aid and fiscal disparity would mean that impact on the average Richfield home would be higher. To demonstrate the impact of this in terms of numbers, here's what I have. In 2022, average city tax per household was $1,428. Average Richfield home increased in value by 15.9% this year, up from $266,000 to $308,000. The proposed levy would increase per household annual taxes to $1,557. That is an estimated increase of $129 annually, or $10.80 monthly. Now, with the reduced distribution levy, average Richfield household annual tax is estimated at $1,591. That is an annual increase of $163 over 2022. We hope the council will find this information helpful, and your feedback is welcome on this update.
Thank you. I want to echo the thanks to all of the staff that worked with us to develop this budget. And I know countless hours were put in and a lot of council questions were answered and questions from the general public as well. So I want to thank everybody for that, and thank you for the update on the impact of the fiscal disparities.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Wayland.
Just to clarify, does that, is that already reflected in this 6.6% proposed levy increase? Or are you saying with the reduced fiscal disparities money, we would have to further increase the levy?
No, the levy would still stay at 6.6%. So that, to give you a sense of this, the, the reduction in the distribution levy is that, that the distribution levy is subtracted from city's total levy, and the result is the levy used to, used to compute tax rate in any given year. So the average household would end up paying, we will get less in fiscal aid dollars, and the average household would end up paying a little bit extra.
Okay, so the fiscal disparities, all that gets calculated after the levy is set as individual property taxes are?
Right.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Supple.
So further clarification, based on what you just said, then the tax capacity rate information that was in the report probably did change?
It would slightly change. I don't have the numbers right with me here, but it would slightly.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to, to being really grateful for you and your staff, I just want to thank all of our staff in the midst of this budget process. And, and just remind all the folks that may be, may be listening that we're in a season of really significant inflation. And so everything is more expensive. And when we see both our tax capacity going up and our municipal aid going down, that's because of, a fruit of our prosperity. And in the midst of all that, we have a, a budget that is lower than the rate of inflation. And so this is the, this is the result, even if the budget goes up slightly, this is the result of really hard diligent work on behalf of all our directors and staff and managers making really challenging decisions to, to bend that cost curve in the midst of a lot of inflation. So I just want to recognize that good work.
Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, have you made the motion yet?
Okay. All right, I would like to move to adopt the attached resolutions establishing the 2023 preliminary property tax levy and proposed date for the truth in taxation hearing, authorizing budget revisions, authorizing revision of the 2022 budget of various departments and city fees for 2023. Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to consider staff's spending recommendation for the city's remaining allocation of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds as established under the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. Congress adopted ARPA in March of 2021, which included $65 billion in recovery funds for cities across the country. Richfield's ARPA funding totals $3.9 million, which was received half in 2021 and the remaining in June of this year. Costs must be obligated by December 31 of 2024 and expended by the end of 2026. There were a few iterations of how to be eligible for the full funding amount. The short version is that through the standard allowance, we, which we elected to use, we received that full allotment of $3.9 million. The funds from this category may be used for the, quote, provision of government services, a broad term that includes any service traditionally provided by a government with some restrictions, that they can't be used to service debt. They can't be put into rainy day funds, be used for settlements, or other projects which conflict with the purpose of ARPA. In the past year, staff has already utilized $1.2 million of the ARPA funds to cover immediate needs like partial funding for the 65th Street Reconstruction Project, upgrading conference rooms to accommodate hybrid meetings, emergency rental assistance, domestic violence victim services, funding a full-time social worker, mental health training, COVID-19 testing, masks, and other urgent needs. This keeps saying staff. This has been in conversation with council. Staff and council recommend spending the remaining $2.6 million ARPA funds on a variety of projects to help our continued response to COVID-19 and the resulting impacts, to strengthen the resilience of our community and ensure we have a quality workforce and infrastructure into the future. Since this is a one-time investment from the federal government, Since this is a one-time investment from the federal government, there is a preference for one-time expenses versus ongoing costs and projects, which provide long-term versus short-term impacts. All potential ARPA investments were reviewed with the city's strategic priorities in mind, evaluating the ARPA fund requests by how they advance operational excellence, community development, sustainable infrastructure, high-quality workforce, and equity and inclusion will ensure that Richfield continues to be a strong community into the future. We'll hear more about the strategic plan shortly. But with all that preamble, the proposed projects are permitting and plan review software for $250,000, implementing Microsoft 365 for $250,000, hiring an additional social worker for $200,000, constructing a splash pad for $750,000, augment the existing social service budget with $300,000, a wage and classification study for $75,000, Emerald Ash Borer Tree Removal Fund of $400,000, Equity Plan and Dashboard $75,000, an additional part-time community service officer $100,000, COVID-19 and Emergency Management $150,000, the community mural at Galaxy Foods $5,000, and the addition since the initial work session, a municipal building energy efficiency and usage audit and improvements for $50,000. That $50,000 was taken from the original proposal for the EAB Tree Removal Fund, but public works staff do not believe that will impact its ability to be effective. So staff is requesting city council approval of the proposed spending plan for the ARPA funding. With this action, staff will incorporate into appropriate budgets and proceed in implementing these projects. Some of them will require future work sessions or council approval to fully develop the program or project. And obviously, there will be more questions in the process. Does staff have anything further to add at this point?
I would just recommend that residents that are curious to learn more about the budget or the ARPA recommendations, that they can access the presentations on the website for the August 17th meeting, and there's also audio available for those meetings.
Yes, thank you. One question before I make the motion. I realized that I hadn't seen, and maybe it's still in process. Do we have a anticipated, I know it all has to happen by 2026, but do we have an anticipated timeline of which projects are starting immediately, or which year or quarter things might be happening in?
I, I don't have anything prepared, but I can go through the list. Microsoft 365 is as we speak. It's being done. The permitting and plan review, the same thing. Additional social worker, I know we've notified the county of our interest. The splash pad, I, I'm not sure where they're at with that. Social service budget would probably be added to each year when they do that request for proposals. The wage and classification study will be early, well, it'll be during, during 2023. EAB Tree Removal Fund, we have a presentation to the council coming up in the, I don't know, in the next month, to provide a proposal on how that would work. Equity Plan and Dashboard, we, we hope to have a strategic plan dashboard to roll out to you all and the community in February of 2023, and hope to post that equity position this week. So that would be pretty quick. The additional part-time CFO, I, I'm not sure where we're at on that. COVID-19 and Emergency Management, I think that is more longer-term planning. He's nodding. The community mural at Galaxy Food, I actually had budgeted for that in 2023, and they're moving really quickly on that, so that's going to be in 2022. And then the building energy efficiency usage audit, I believe, will be, if not this year, early next year. They're already in touch.
Okay. Thank you. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's all good.
That is helpful. So I will make the motion that we adopt a resolution directing the city manager to expend these ARPA funds as part of the regular budgeting and purchasing processes for the approved projects.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this? Nope. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Council Member Hefert O'Leary.
So this item is to consider staff's recommendation to adopt the 2023 through 2026 Richfield Strategic Plan. Strategic planning is a process that helps leaders examine the current state of the organization, determine a desired future state, establish priorities, and define a set of actions to achieve specific outcomes. The process followed by Richfield was designed to answer four key questions. Where are we now? Where are we going? How will we get there? What will we do? The process is divided into a development phase and an implementation phase. The full process is depicted below. The plan consists of five strategic priorities, the issues of greatest importance to the city of Richfield over the next four years. Associated with each priorities is a set of desired outcomes, key outcome indicators, and performance targets, describing expected results and how the results will be measured. The plan also includes strategic initiatives that will be undertaken to achieve the targeted outcomes. The five priorities identified are operational excellence, community development, sustainable infrastructure, workforce capacity, and equity and inclusion. The strategic planning process began with a meeting with the consultant and the Richfield senior staff on October 4th, 2021. That meeting included a review of strategic planning principles, a discussion of the organizational value proposition, the status of vision and mission statements, a tutorial in preparing an environmental scan, and a discussion on community outreach. Next, staff performed an examination of the operating environment consisting of an environmental scan, a community survey, and eight focus groups, sorry, as well as city council interviews and a SWOT analysis. The strategic planning continued with two facilitated leadership sessions focused on effective governance on November 5th, 2021, and February 10th, 2022. That leadership group included the mayor, city council, and senior management team. During the two sessions, the group discussed roles and responsibilities, governance best practice, teamwork, decision-making, style differences, and conflict resolution. On March 23rd and 24th, 2022, the city's leadership team held a two-day strategic planning session. They developed a set of priorities, the ones previously described, the key outcomes and performance targeted. Based on the five priorities identified, the city's management team met on April 28th, 2022, to create a set of strategic initiatives and develop detailed action plans. The strategic priorities, key outcome indicators, performance targets, and strategic initiatives are summarized in the attached document, the plan. To successfully address the strategic priorities and achieve the intended outcomes expressed in the performance target, it's necessary to have a focused set of actions, including detailed implementation steps to guide organizational effort. Richfield will accomplish this through a set of strategic initiatives. Strategic initiatives are broadly described but narrowly focused activities that are aligned with the priorities and targeted to the achievement of the outcomes expressed in the targets. Staff then worked with the consultant to confirm that the targets, key outcome indicators, and initiatives were consistent with the desired outcomes and priorities. This review also included researching and refining some of the targets and key outcome indicators to ensure that the needed data is or will be available. Since some of the key outcome indicator data is not currently tracked, some of the targets do not have a value listed. Staff will work over the next year to determine a baseline for the data and propose specific targets. Staff will provide updated times for providing this data to council as part of the annual effective governance meeting. Staff proposes to review progress on the strategic plan at two meetings per year. During the preliminary strategic planning discussion on August 1st, Craig Rapp, the consultant, presented the draft strategic plan. The, this work session was an opportunity for the city council to provide a review of the plan. Council expressed interest in expanding the targets, specifically council wished to see more work on maintaining affordable units, increased focus on combating climate change, including how the city plans to communicate those targets to the community, and more specific outcomes and timeframes for equity work. Staff pulled together updated strategic priorities documents, which cover the items discussed during the August 1st meeting. Staff is now requesting the city council's approval of the 2023-2026 strategic plan. The plan will guide the city's resources and efforts for the next four years. With this action, the staff will proceed in implementing these initiatives. It is important to note that while these five priorities guide where the city will focus efforts and resources over the next four years, they do not represent a comprehensive list of the city's efforts or projects. The city council and staff will still use their annual work plans, budgeting processes, and other planning initiatives, such as the comprehensive plan, to allocate resources. We also recognize many other significant areas of work, like the city's sustainability efforts, although not listed as a main focus, are inherently connected to the success of the rest of the city's priorities and the community in the future. We commit to accomplishing the five priorities listed above in the most environmentally responsible manner practical. Recognizing the stress caused by climate change threatens the well-being of urban populations, including low-income residents and those who live in high-risk areas, and puts additional stress on our communities, infrastructure, and organization. Um, does staff have anything to add?
Yes, thank you. I'm excited to recommend the document for approval tonight. It's, I, we first started talking about it in 2019, and I remember we did the community survey early in 2020, and then the pandemic hit. And actually, I think that delay is, is, was good. There was learning in all of that, and I think it's a better document because of it. It's been an intense year of community engagement and meetings with staff and council to development. It still has details to be added. I had some questions about that. When will we, when will we be able to put those specific targets in? And that's a really good question. Part of the delay is we, we don't currently measure a lot of those Koi, so we need to develop those processes. We need to get the staff in place to, to develop them. I, we do expect to have most of those filled in by the time we roll out that dashboard and the first time we meet with you to look at the strategic plan. It should be about February timeline. We do plan, as part of our quarterly meeting schedule with council, with staff and council, the leadership team, two of those meetings will be dedicated to updating the dashboard and looking at the strategic plan, but it'll be a living document. There are some of, some of those KIs and targets that are going to take longer. They're going to be more like a year. So one of, one of the initiatives is develop a training program for staff, and then have a, a target of what percentage of staff are, would be, or how many hours they would, you know, be able to dedicate to training. That's going to take a while. We're going to have to develop that program, so that's an example, one that's going to take a little bit. But I can, I can take questions on all of this. I, I, I do think this is a big step for the city, and I, and I don't think it's just because of the plan and developing the outcomes and the priorities and the strategic initiatives. I do think all that's important, but I think that it is, it's a commitment to, to make, to do those measurements and to learn from it, and to continue striving to meet those outcomes and those targets. We're going to, we're going to miss targets. It's, it's not, it's not making the targets, it's the learning and the, and the dedication to striving to meet them that, to, to me is important, and the, the kind of culture that I want to build here.
Just to make a comment, I'll make the motion in a second, but just for the public, if you haven't looked at the attachment, the targets we're talking about are extremely specific or will be after the number is filled in, because I think that is part of what makes this different from a lot of documents that cities produce. It's not just a goal of like, we want to build more, we want to be more inclusive. It's like very specifically, how much do we want to do that and on what timeline? Like, one example is one of our goals is an increased tax base, and one of the numbers to be filled in is like, what is the dollar amount at a minimum we want to increase the value of new permits by 2026? So the goal is very specific, and I also just want to compliment staff. I, I was skeptical of this process. It felt like a lot of busy work at first, but it really felt collaborative, and I'm, I'm really proud of what we put together. It was worth the process, and it felt like a really great collaboration between leadership, staff leadership and the city council. I'll go ahead and make the motion, but if anybody else wants to make comments and discussion?
Second.
Okay.
I, I thought you, I thought you were making the motion. Sorry, I was confused.
No, that's fine. I did, I did make the, I make the staff recommendation motion, and Simon seconded.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Any additional comments or questions from council? Council Member Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo, I really appreciated this process. I think more than most anything we've done in my three years on council, this felt really deeply collaborative and like a team effort. And even to the, the tweaks since our last conversation to add in some more specifics about what does affordability look like? How are we measuring that? And some of the other comments that were made there. Just really appreciate all of what we have. Also, just want to say, I'm really excited for and appreciate city manager Rodriguez, the communications plan that you shared of, for the strategic plan, the budget, the ARPA projects. I would love to think that everyone is sitting at home raptly watching this and reading the agenda packets as they come out, but know that most people will not know this is happening, and so how we communicate it to the whole city in the, the weeks and months and years to come is going to be really essential. The last thing I'll say that I really appreciate, I have mentioned before, but most of the feedback I got, as folks saw this, was people who care really deeply about climate change wanting to see that more prominently. I appreciate the, the slight language shift of not just we're going to make some priorities, but we are going to complete our top two priorities in whatever the specific timeframe was for folks who are wanting to be part of setting those priorities. Just want to highlight in that initiative that that will be happening in quarter two and three of next year. So keep your eyes open for updates on when we'll be looking through our climate action plan, picking out the specifics of what we focus on. The one very specific and maybe moot point, since the initiatives are probably the most important, but someone did point out that we, we don't have climate change listed at all in the SWOT analysis, and I could have sworn when we had looked through it that we had listed that in threats, and maybe even one of the other places as well. So I don't know if it's worth, or even possible, to go back and edit anything at this point, but just want to acknowledge for folks who were like, I don't see this in here, just want to reiterate what is in the staff report, that we are taking that into consideration. I will keep pushing us to do even more, but appreciate the folks who spoke up about that.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from council? Council Member Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to, want to thank our staff, and I just want to reflect for, for a moment over the last several years, how much change we've experienced as a city. When Mayor Rodriguez, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez and I joined the council, we shifted the median age of our council down about 30 years. And we also became the first majority Latino-led council in the state, and our city has changed significantly, and in the midst of that, we had significant civil unrest and a pandemic, and a lot of leadership change. And so I just want to recognize how challenging all those things simultaneously can be, and how important, and how fruitful I feel this work has been, and I appreciate the leadership of our city manager Rodriguez and our directors that are here in the room, and those that are not, that this, I think, not just this document, but the process that we engaged in to produce this document was worthwhile, and I feel more trust, and not just trust, that's not the wrong word, but a common vocabulary and focus between staff and council. And so I just want to say just a very heartfelt thank you and appreciation, and, and just gratefulness to be able to collaborate on the, on these projects in the coming years.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? I'll share mine, and hats off. All right. So the motion was made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item is city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share that I went to Jack Rose's Celebration of Life last weekend. It was, I mean, obviously, we miss Jack, but it was a wonderful celebration. Room was overflow only, standing room only. There were several staff members there, and, you know, it's, it's one thing to have so many physical examples of your legacy, because he really did improve transportation in Richfield and like, I think throughout the country, I think, when he was consulting. But also, the room was full of friends and family and colleagues. All of them had wonderful stories to share and, and such affection for Jack, and just a wonderful example for me, anyway. It really touched me of a life bullet. And that's all.
Thank you, city manager. Claims in peril.
I'll move approval of both sets of.
I'll move approval of both sets of claims and payroll.
Second?
Thank you. Claims and payroll, the motion has been made and seconded. Any comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. The next item is hats off, the final item, hats off to Hometown Hits. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I also just want to recognize Jack, Jack Bros. And he deserves more than hats off. We miss him. He's an incredible man. And really, Richfield is so lucky to have had him and his leadership, and we miss him. Also, on a, on a lighter note, Penn Fest is coming up and this, this coming Sunday. And this is an incredible opportunity. It's between 1:00 and 5:00 on Penn Avenue. And if you've never been, it's open streets, there's great food, there's lots of games and activities for kids, for adults. And it's something that I've sorely missed with the, with the pandemic. And it's just a great opportunity to be with community, to be with neighbors, to get to know your neighbors and get to know your city. So come, come to, come to Penn Avenue on Sunday, and it'll be a great time.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Thank you. I would just also reiterate the comments about Jack. Knew him before he joined Richfield or when he was consulting and when he was on staff here. And I think one of my favorite memories was he was doing roundabout education at 66 in Lyndale, and he was like personally doing this, was like somewhat senior staff, like out there with a little table and his legs sunned out. And, and then I was like biking by and I just like saw him and we chatted for like 45 minutes, and he was kind of showing off all the details of the roundabout and things that I hadn't even thought of. You know, we talk about like, there's less crashes and stuff, but it was like, do you hear how quiet it is? Do you hear how nice it is to be here? Like this is part of the experience that he saw in cities and he made for Richfield. And Hometown Hit that I planned is actually related because I got to co-lead a tour for the conference of the Association of Bicycle and Pedestrian Professionals, which was here in Richfield and looked at a lot of Jack's work and the other great things that Richfield has done. So it was really cool as part of this national conference, which I also attended on behalf of the city. Particularly want to thank Ben Manabog in Public Works, Will Wislow at the schools who provided the bikes for this tour. But basically, we had bike, bike bed professionals, about 15 folks come from across the country who were at this conference, take the bus, take the orange line down to Richfield, and then ride these Richfield School bikes around town. And we got to check out a bunch of some of the great things we've done, get some feedback. And there was a lot of enthusiasm, and I particularly want to share, you know, you know, the, the thing is, the conference was at the U and people were looking at downtown Minneapolis, but what I heard from a lot of people, both during the session and at the conference, was there's not that much of the country that looks like downtown Minneapolis. There's a lot of the country that looks something like Richfield, and what we're learning here, we're seeing here, we can take back with us. So it's a really good opportunity where Richfield has led, something to be proud of, and some feedback to take back as well from those professionals. So that was a really great experience.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you. I also wanted to honor Jack Bros's legacy. I thought of him the other day when I was approached by a resident that was concerned about pedestrian safety, and she was talking about how she sometimes feels imperiled when she's trying to cross at a roundabout, even with the lights flashing. And I thought about one of those things that Councilmember Hayford O'Leary mentioned, where Jack was out at the roundabout and he was giving lessons to people and talking about how we've got kind of the brownish-orange pavement with the bumps on it, that you step into that so people know you're seriously wanting to cross. But then he emphasized that you need to make eye contact with the driver because you got to make sure that they actually see you. And so he was like, they are demonstrating this to people as they are coming through and showing them how to safely go through the roundabouts. And I thought about that as this resident was talking to me about the pedestrian issues, and she was hoping that we would do an education campaign to remind drivers to, to please watch out for pedestrians and bicyclists. But I also just immediately thought of Jack being out there showing people how to, to, to take care of yourself and make sure you have eye contact and stay safe. So I want to thank, you know, or honor his legacy and his memory for that. And then the other thing I did want to talk about is that this weekend is the Homecoming Parade at 10:00 a.m. in the city of Richfield. So if you want to join the Richfield Public Schools in, in joining that Homecoming Parade, you can check out their website and come join them for that before you go to Penn Fest on Sunday. Because the Homecoming Parade's on Saturday, so lots of opportunities this weekend.
Thank you. Councilmember Whelan?
I wanted to add one that for folks in, well, in any part of town, but especially in the southeast part of town, who've maybe been patiently waiting as Washington Park is under construction, that I was just over there. The, the new path has been poured. You can see the, the grading for what will be the two now soccer fields instead of just one. And so we still have a little bit of time to wait. I think spring will be the full opening, but it's looking really good, and you can walk along the path again. And so just hats off to all of the people in Public Works and I think Recreation as well, who helped with redesigning that park as part of the Underpass Project and using that as an opportunity to get an additional soccer field. Another event for a week, not this weekend, but the following weekend, on the 23rd, the mural at Galaxy Foods will be completed. There's a reveal party that has like food trucks and Aztec dancers, and the, the mural itself and the event are all jungle-themed. I think there'll be face painting as well for those who want it. But it is the, not only a great art piece in Richfield, but it's also Minnesota's first mural that will incorporate augmented reality, which the shorthand that I use for that is, that's the technology that Pokemon Go uses, where you can hold up a screen and it, you still see what's in front of you, but it adds in animations and things so that the mural will also be animated. And then lastly, just want to say thank you to the, my colleagues, those of you who I saw, CC'd on emails, those of you who did this outside, that I've been preoccupied figuring out parenting the last few weeks, and I know several of you have helped respond to constituents from my district who had questions. And so thank you, thanks residents for your patience. And yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. And I just will share a few thoughts. Before I lived in Richfield, one of, some of the first folks that I connected with was in my role in the Public Health Department, and Jack Bros was one of them. I got the chance to work on the, at the time, helping launch the Complete Streets Plan and Work and, you know, the initiation of the Penn Fest activities and Safe For Us to School and just getting really involved in helping Richfield residents be more active out and about in their community as a vehicle for building health. And Jack has just been such a tremendous leader, and his legacy nationally is, will be remembered. I mean, I remember years ago, they would, Jack would host staff and teams from other cities, other communities here in Richfield, showing the infrastructure, and people just could not believe when they came to Richfield. How did you fund this? How did you do it? And, and I came in on the tail end on council, at the tail end of like the really strong pushback against the roundabouts. I, I joined at that time and towards the end of it, and the fear that people had and, and the pushback. And now just seeing how far we've come, and, and Richfield was the first suburban community in Minnesota to be, get a bike-friendly designation, bike-friendly community designation. And his way of connecting with residents and just being such a fun-loving, intelligent person who really cared about our community and completely transformed our city. I, you know, he really helped the Renaissance period that we're going in, this rebirth of our community. A lot of it had to do with Jack's vision and Jack's work and all of our staff. But Jack, you know, he just was such a leader that I, he was one of the first people I connected with in the staff, and I learned a lot from him, so absolutely, we will miss him. And his legacy absolutely lives throughout, throughout our community and very thankful for his work and dedication to Richfield. And then one of the items was already shared, and then lastly, I just want to give a hats off to our city staff. There were several items on our council agenda today that really have taken years to move forward and a lot of planning. And I do feel like we're in a place that feels very collaborative, very cohesive. I, I see so many things being led by our staff where they're being responsive to the immediate needs of our community today. They're being creative and, and partnering with community, but also looking at that short term, looking at that midterm and long term, and being really adaptive to the needs of our community. And it's just, I just, today I was in awe just listening to the items on the agenda and just thinking of all the things that our staff has really led to get us to where we are today. And I feel very calm and, and very thankful to be leading with our staff. And just to see everything that we've, you've led us through is, is incredible. So I just want to give a huge hats off to our staff at the city of Richfield. Councilmember Troutman?
Here, I just wanted to make a quick observation. We have a scout in the audience, and I can only assume that being here at 9:00 on a school night is earning some kind of merit badge. And so I just want to recognize our scout and the merit badge that you surely earned tonight. Hats off to you, sir.
Oh my gosh, especially tonight. We have no more business. I will adjourn our meeting. Good night, everyone.